The meeting was posted for 5:30, so the time is now 5:51 PM. We will now call this special public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbel Independent School District to order. Moving to our first item of business, closed session. A closed session of the... Sorry. A closed session of the Board will now be held in the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such a closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. A closed session of the Board will now be held. The time is now 5:51 PM. The time is now 7:11 PM. We will now reconvene into opening session. Thank you for joining us tonight. A reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not meetings of the public. The Umbel ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in regular meeting to receive reports from staff, take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda items and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everybody to stand for the pledge. Mr. Grabowski, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Moving on to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Brown, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Thank you, Madam President. Would be glad to do. As part of what makes Umbel ISD special is that students have opportunities to participate in a variety of activities. In tonight's inspiring moment, we learn about one of those opportunities. And I gotta tell you, when I first read this, listen to this, because it made me pause, like, where are we going with this? Listen. Where students gather around a fire and push each other. And I wasn't sure where we going with that, but it's to be the best in one of the more competitive industries in Texas, and I think you're really gonna enjoy this.
Students across Umbel ISD have a vast array of opportunities when it comes to hands-on learning experiences outside the traditional classroom. Life lessons are taught through athletics, art, theater, dance, and FFA, a barbering academy, an EMT certification program, and a competition barbecue team? Well, as big as football is in the Lone Star State, barbecue may take a close second.
Texas is known for their food, so I guess barbecue is higher than football. Football is like, once a year. Barbecue is all year round.
In 2018, the High School Barbecue League was started to create a platform for high schoolers to put their barbecue skills to the test across the state of Texas. In the fall of 2023, Summer Creek High School started a new barbecue team and joined the league under the guidance of Samantha Guajardo.
My interview with Dr. Manny and the whole, like, panel that decided to hire me, their last statement was like, "Do you have any questions for us?" And one of those was, "Well, what are your thoughts about starting a barbecue team?" Mr. Segura said, "I'm all for it," and so did Dr. Manny.
The students competed in brisket, ribs, chicken, beans, and dessert categories throughout the 2023-2024 season. Summer Creek traveled to multiple competitions throughout the year and was one of 93 teams to qualify for the 2024 Texas High School Barbecue State Championships in Round Rock, Texas.
Morning. We are 6:44. Where are we going, guys?
Round Rock.
For what?
State competition.
Our very first competition where we advanced and got the invitation to state. If you don't get an invitation to state, you really aren't recognized.
We all had to get up early in the morning, and then, other than that, it was, we all got to it. Because at the end of the day, even though you're tired, you still had fun. You had friends to be with. You were able to turn in a product, and you were able to place good.
Out of the 93 teams that competed at the state competition, the HTX Dog Pound team finished 14th in ribs, 18th in brisket, and 30th in chicken. Typically, restaurants smoke brisket for around 10 to 12 hours, but in a barbecue competition, time is limited.
I put a binder on and then all my seasonings, and then put it on for seven hours, let it rest for an hour, turn it in.
Through all the traveling, hours of tending fire, and cooking at competitions, the HTX Dog Pound became more than just a team.
I'm not a mom, yet, but if this is what a mom would feel like, then super proud. You know, like, these are my kids. I always refer them to my kids. Whenever we go out somewhere, it's Ms. G party at seven.
What more can you ask for? Being with good people? I mean, my best friends at school, cooking around a fire. What more do you want? It's just a blast.
So, what's next for the HTX Dog Pound team?
Next year, I hope to expand into two teams. I hope that more opportunities in regard to, like, networking, that we could do more for the community, and just hope that we continue to build leaders, continue to build talented students too, and just give them the opportunity that not a lot of schools can offer these kids.
Well, that does it for this month's inspiring moment. Anyone else hungry now?
Well, I talked about football. I think I will find that tailgate when Summer Creek is playing. That looked pretty good. And so, to be part of the Summer Creek barbecue team, students must be registered in an FFA class and then try out for the team. They have a strong, solid senior class coming back, and everybody's looking forward to the 24-25 school year. Now then, I want to announce that, at this time, I would like to call Umbel ISD Police Chief Solomon Cook to the podium for an important announcement.
I stand before you tonight to address recent safety measures implemented at our public school board meetings. The safety and security of all attending are the utmost importance to us. Across the nation, a wide variety of events, we have seen concern incidents. To ensure a safe environment here for everyone, we have introduced enhanced safety precautions. You may have noticed a roped-in area in the front of the room. We are going to reserve this portion of the room for district recognition that occurs during a board meeting. We will ask people to not to enter this secure area. If you have something in your... to hand to the board members, please give it to our public communication staff members, who are always sitting at the front right side of the room, and they were distributed to trustees. That's those great ladies right over there. Okay? Additionally, we will have officers stationed in the front of the room, as well as the back of the room, like before. We will continue to have additional officers throughout the property, which has always been our procedure for the years past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Cook. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so. Do so following the procedure outlined in the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the Umbel ISD website. I'm going to invite the first four speakers to come forward, and the first speaker, please come to the podium. The other three, please be seated in that front row. Tracy Clemmons, Scott Ford, Larissa Powell, and Deanie Allen. Ms. Clemmons? Mr. Ford?
Hello, Scott Ford, teacher. First of all, what a crazy two and a half weeks this has been. Glad that we're all here. We all survived it. How many people bought generators? I'm kind of curious. Before I get into what I want to talk about, I do want to thank you guys for having the committees on the agenda. I think that'd be a great benefit to the district, as you'll be pulling subject matter experts from pretty much all walks, whether they are faculty, staff, community members. So, I applaud you guys on doing that. I think that'd be a great idea. But I did want to talk about the IT certification program and what we've got accomplished and where we're gonna go. So, we finished off this last school year with about 30 students getting computer certification. This was a history for this district. So, that was actually amazing. We had students from every high school campus and a middle school campus get certified. This coming year, the Principles of IT course is being offered on a Tassie High School campus. I'll be teaching that, as well as Umbel High School campus. Still unsure about one other campus that's teaching it. So, we could have up to, I don't know, 30 to 50 kids getting certified in that, as well as the computer maintenance program, where we are setting records, attendance on that one. I'm happy to say, when I took over this program, I had 10 students in the computer maintenance program total. This coming year, I've got over 30 students enrolled, from Summer Creek, Umbel High School, and of course, Tassie High School. So, this is kind of our old, old numbers, where we have a full classroom. I'm also excited about the fact that we now have a cybersecurity program. If you follow any of the news, especially what just happened recently, cybersecurity is a field that there will never be a shortage of need and help for, as well as the pay is insanely amazing. So, looking forward to a wonderful year with you all. This also, by the way, I committed to doing three years back in the classroom. I left the C-suites as a private, you know, corporate training and all that fun stuff, and I agreed to come back for three years to fix this program, and this will be my third year. So, I'm looking forward to leaving this district with an incredibly strong IT certification program, one that is not just the best in the area, but the best in Texas, if not the entire country. So, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you all. It's great seeing everybody here again and back to normal, and I'm also looking forward to my nightly tradition after a board meeting and going to the Waffle House. So, y'all have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Ms. Powell?
Good evening. I hope everyone fared well after the hurricane. First off, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Brown on his raise. Congratulations. And I also feel like we should roll out the red carpet for all the fancy attorneys that are here tonight. Good job, y'all. I recently came across a post on Facebook that raised some concerns. I emailed each of you a copy of it. If you don't have a copy, I have another printed copy, then be happy to give it to you. But is the content of these emails the reason behind the potential dismissal of Dr. Fagan? Are these instructions to terminate her being issued by Walsh and Gallegos? I just want to be clear that you have concrete grounds to terminate her and are not subjecting the taxpayers to another frivolous lawsuit. You know, this sounds really familiar, and I want to go back to that motion that the Board voted on and approved on December 21st. That was regarding Thomas Newman. I move that the Board place Thomas Newman on paid leave pending the completion of the ongoing Title IX matters in order to completely insulate him from those matters, both for his own protection, as well as the protection of the school board. Is that why it took almost a year to get the results of Mr. Scarfo's Title IX? I mean, I finally got part of that open records request. I put it on February 21st, and man, there's a lot of legal bills, guys. I wish some of this money was spent on the kids. I mean, you know, that would be great. I assume that Mr. Scarfo's report will be whitewashed since it was brought and paid for by the taxpayers' dollars. Mr. Scarfo, did you really need to make daily phone calls with the district's outside attorney? That's really expensive for us, and remember, the district's broke. Will your Title IX be released tonight? I mean, the December 21st motion did state that it would protect the school board and not the district as a whole. So, I assume, now that you have a conflict of interest, you'll be recusing yourself tonight on the vote of Dr. Fagan. Again, don't want to get sued again, because we're already in hot water. Additionally, I'd like to inquire about Morgan Morrow's situation. You know, we don't have any general counsel in-house, so that's why all these fancy attorneys are here tonight. I mean, is this the norm for the district? It just seems like these lawyers are trying to eliminate any potential threat to their pocketbook just one at a time, knocking them out, taking away their jobs. Speaking of Walsh and Gallegos, I see that Craig Wood and Hannah are here tonight. How much is that gonna cost us? Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest, you know, with all the alleged bar complaints? I mean, just saying, again, don't want to have the taxpayers pay for another costly lawsuit, and we all know that TEA is watching us like hawks, y'all. Speaking of TEA, do they know that you guys responded to them before it was approved by the Board? Like, how many more lawsuits are we gonna get? And I mean, God forbid, TEA come in because the Board protected to vote... because the Board voted to protect itself and not the district as a whole. Hey, Ms. Spalding, why are all these law firms here tonight? I mean, these bills, what... how much is this gonna cost us?
Thank you, Mrs. Powell.
Good evening. I am Deanie Allen, reading specialist and dyslexia specialist. Tonight, I ask, why is Elizabeth Fagan, the superintendent, on paid leave? This question has been asked before, and there was absolute silence. Why is Elizabeth Fagan on paid leave? What has she done to prompt a termination? I'm a taxpayer, I would like to know. So far, she seems to have done a good job. You gave her a good evaluation last August. Moving on to conflict of interest, I ask Robert Scarfo to recuse himself from voting on his own Title IX report. Mr. Scarfo should also recuse himself from voting on Dr. Fagan's termination because Dr. Fagan is the wife of Troy Kite, the person who filed the Title IX complaint. Voting on that could easily provide an opportunity for retaliation. I also ask Ken Kirchhofer, Chris Parker, and Mike Grabowski to recuse themselves from voting on Fagan's termination. Kirchhofer, Parker, and Grabowski are named respondents in a complaint filed by Troy Kite, the superintendent's husband. Once again, that could be construed to be retaliation. Definitely a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Carter? And if I could get Mr. Silva and Mr. Kirk to go ahead and come up to that front row.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalie Carter. I'm the mother of three amazing kids, two of which are here today. One's in elementary school, one's in middle school, and one's gonna be starting at Summer Creek High School. Go Bulldogs! I stand before you today with a sense of urgency and deep concern regarding the proposed actions of tonight's meeting. I believe it's crucial that we acknowledge the gravity of the situation and the potential harm it may cause our district. My purpose today is to specifically address the conflict of interest that requires certain trustees to recuse themselves from voting in the Title IX findings and the employment of Dr. Fagan. I want to emphasize that my comments are not meant to endorse, support, any particular side or person, but rather uphold the principles of transparency and accountability. It is important that we abide by the laws by the great state of Texas, which clearly state that state law supersedes Board policy, including conflicts of interest. Trustees Scarfo, Parker, Kirchhofer have conflicts of interest. They directly relate to Dr. Fagan's employment and the Title IX complaint filed against trustee Scarfo. This raises concern about impartiality, fairness, and the protection of the rights of all parties involved. The actions of these trustees has shown a disregard for impartiality and fairness, resulting in valid Title IX and EEOC complaints, allegations of public corruption, multiple lawsuits, and complaints to oversight entities. Their alleged mismanagement and interference in administrative matters have cost the district over $1 million, ultimately creating a distressing situation without any clear resolution in sight. Trustees Parker, her hostile attitude towards former counsel General Newman, trustees Kirchhofer, your assumed role as the Board liaison to outside counsel, and trustee Scarfo, your involvement in your own Title IX matter are all examples of interconnected conflicts that compromise the integrity of the Board's decisions. These conflicts not only impact the trustees themselves, but also undermine the principles of fairness and accountability. It is crucial that the trustees abstain from voting on the matters related to Dr. Fagan's employment and the Title IX complaint. The integrity of the Board's decisions, public trust, and your ability to avoid further investigations and lawsuits depend on it. In conclusion, I implore the Board to act in the best interests of our district and ensure that all conflicts of interest are appropriately addressed. I encourage you to uphold the principles of fairness, impartiality, and transparency in your decision-making process. By doing so, you can restore integrity and regain the trust of the community you were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Oscar Silva, that guy from Facebook again. Earlier this year, I asked for the Board to release a Title IX investigation against the athletic director. Y'all did that, and thank you for that. The community generally appreciated it. At the time of that request, some of the Board trustees made a... expressed some reservations about disclosing that information, specifically citing the pending investigation that is on the agenda for tonight. They emphasized the importance of having full context when it was released. Based on the agenda, I'm assuming that that investigation has concluded, and so it looks like we've reached the point where that full context might be available. In that vein, yesterday, I submitted an open records request, and this evening, I'm here to formally request the release of that Title IX investigation, referencing item 4C of tonight's agenda regarding Mr. Scarfo. The previous investigation was about a school district employee, and I mentioned that in my public comment, that I didn't know if it'd be released because of that. Tonight's is about an elected official. In that regard, I think there's even a greater need for transparency. As y'all know, elected officials are chosen by and accountable to the public, and so the community has a right to be informed about serious allegations, investigations involving those we've trusted with leadership positions. Multiple trustees from the dais have publicly acknowledged the seriousness of the allegations, and given that public funds that were referenced earlier have been used for paying for this matter, I think it's in the community's best interest to understand the full scope and the outcome of the investigation. And that is it. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Hey, guys. I want to let you all know that, you know, I love what y'all do. Y'all are elected officials up here, and I know you're getting paid a lot of money. We appreciate you. And, uh, but, but there's some things... I got this article, I don't know if y'all saw it, "Umbel ISD Malls firing leader," was in the paper today. Okay? So, I'm going off of this. This is fact, you would think. And, uh, reading through this article here, first off, let me go back. Mr. Scarfo, thank you so much for everything you do, buddy. Okay? I appreciate you. You don't deserve what's happening to you. Okay? All I know is this, you were a great guy until Troy Kite was busted, whatever we want to call it, okay? All of a sudden, you come up and be a bad guy. Okay? Isn't that amazing? So, uh, and then all I know is now, in this article, Troy quit, and Ms. Fagan quit. They quit, because they didn't get their little way, or somebody questioned them. Okay? The last time I looked, we all have bosses, and you're gonna get questioned. Okay? And, uh, please pick up the good work, Mr. Scarfo. You're doing a good job. And if one thing I would want, and I know I'm jumping all over the place here, guys, if you're gonna run for that Board up there, vote. Vote. Or don't run. Get off. Okay? There's a reason why we have seven people and four... if it's four and three, then that's that. We got a jury up there, that's what you guys are, and that's just making decisions for us, and this is our district. It's not mine, it's not yours, it's ours. And you're up there making decisions for us, I expect you guys to vote. And if you're worried about somebody not liking you, or you're not liking your vote, get off. Okay? Make the right decision. And I challenge you to do that. And right now, we have zero, okay? There goes back to Troy quit, Liz quit, zero confidence in either one of those two guys. Okay? Hold yourself accountable. Don't go back. Okay? And in this, uh, so Ms. Carter, I don't know how she's getting all this information that she just gives, but what we have here, evidently, the four people, Scarfo, Grabowski, Kirchhofer, and Parker, they have voted one way or the other. So, don't beat them up for it, or then I'm gonna appeal, appeal, appeal. Crap on much appeal, it was voted four to three back to get rid of Troy. Okay? And it happened. And evidently, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the way it was with Ms. Fagan.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Our next item is comments by individual Board members, starting with Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, I just want to say kudos to the barbecue team. I did not know we even had a barbecue team, so I'm very excited that they were also successful, and congratulations to them and Ms. G for coming up with that idea, and for Mr. Manning saying, "Yes, we're all in." I love that. And second, I just hope that everyone fared well during Hurricane Barrel. I know I was out without power for nine days, but for me, after being flooded with Harvey with 42 inches of water at my house, it didn't seem so bad to not have power. But I know a lot of people struggled, and I hope everybody's kind of on the other side of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
I've got just a short comment to Ms. Jasmine Thomas, Autumn Creek Elementary, selected as a finalist for Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. Very, very cool work.
Anybody over here have anything? Mr. Holmes?
I had to talk on the barbecue. I just had some brisket from Firecraft in Kingwood. So, that Summer Creek team, that brisket looked amazing. So, anytime you need a taste tester, I will surely come right down West Lake Houston and will gladly be a taste tester. So, I'm really proud of that team, and again, we continue to push the envelope on things that I think, I'm gonna almost say non-traditional from what you would think, but we are creating businesses, and I just appreciate the leadership of the school district in that respect. Same comments as Ms. Lamond Dixon, just the hurricane. I know that there's still some people without power, still some people without internet, still some people without a house because that tree might have fallen through their roof. So, again, to the entire community, you know, still praying for those that are without. I wanted to mention Mary, and I pray, Mary, please forgive me if I mispronounce your last name, Mary Carew. She's a... name, Mary Carew, reached out to Dr. Brown a couple of weeks ago and set up some food stations. I believe Ms. Lamond Dixon helped volunteer, but she worked with the community, a couple of elected officials, and was able to pass out food and water, and it was a cooling station. I want to say to the Generation Park leadership, they had cooling stations for those, of course, that were without power. Again, just showed up and just really made it about the community. Lastly, Scott Ford. I think it's not lost on anybody on this board, your passion for kids, and it's appreciated. All I'm saying is if this is gonna be your last year, you know, please, you know, start working on that succession plan, if you know of anybody that have the same passion as you. Okay? All right then. Well, there you go, but we definitely want somebody that's just as passionate as you about our kids and our students. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Kirchhafer?
Thank you, Madam President. Some sad news. The coaching community is a tightly knit one, and tonight, it's hurting across the state of Texas. I don't know if anyone saw this news, but late last night in San Antonio, at the Texas High School Coaches Convention, Aiden Rose Burt, a 28-year-old volleyball and track coach from Jasper High School, she was struck by a stray bullet while attending a social, an evening social event as part of the convention. Tragically, she passed away. Some of our coaches witnessed this tragedy. The UMBL ISD counselors will be on campus tomorrow to support coaches who want to talk. I know Coach Murphy was, I believe, sitting right next to her. Let's pray for Aiden Burt's family and the Jasper High School community. Our hearts are with you.
Thank you. Mr. Sitten?
No comment.
All right. Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to make these comments. You know, there have been many comments and accusations were repeatedly made by certain speakers that in, that in due time will show that they were misplaced, inaccurate, to say the least. Once all the reports are released, in addition to the already public Williams-Kite Title IX, the public will be able to draw their own informed conclusions and determine which trustees met their fiduciary obligations to this district. There will also be a full accounting on the funds that were expended related to the myriad investigations, PIA requests, and grievance filings over the last year. And for the record, I've had to expend over $35,000 thus far of my personal funds to defend against the Title IX allegations made against me. So just keep all that in mind, okay? Thank you.
Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Brown?
Yes. Well, Mr. Grabowski stole a little bit of my thunder, but we certainly want to congratulate Ms. Thomas on being selected as a finalist for the Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. You know, there's 165,000 educators in our region, and she's one of the six finalists. And when she is announced as the winner, August 1st, she will represent Region Four in the Texas Teacher of the Year finalist. Also want to thank all of our maintenance and operations team for all their work during and after the storm, and to get our schools back to where we could occupy them, once Center Point got some power to us, which they did. And so certainly appreciate that. Appreciate Chris Cummings and his team for keeping us connected. Things you don't see behind the scenes, but that are so important, and Chris and his team work diligently, and we appreciate that. New teachers reported yesterday, so you know school is around the corner. You know, when you see the cross-country runners out, the band in the parking lot, something's about to happen. And so all of that's taken place, and so we welcome our new teachers to our family and look forward to working with them. And then when we meet next, we will have, wow, so four or five days under our belt. So August the 7th. So looking forward to that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Moving on to our next agenda item, action items from closed session, item 4A, personnel recommendations.
Madam President, as a point of information, I handled this the way I was supposed to.
State your point.
I handled this the way I was supposed to. I sent an email to ask for clarification, and I didn't get a response. My question is, why was our agenda presented to Ellen Spalding and Paige Kyle from Walsh, Ellen Spalding from Spalding and all the other names, Paige Kyle from Walsh and Gallegos for approval, when Walsh was only approved by the board to handle the original Title IX case, and the board has not appointed or approved an attorney to handle our day-to-day business since general counsel and assistant general counsel were placed on leave and/or non-renewed? So my question is, which I asked prior to the meeting, why were this agenda presented to those attorneys for approval?
Well, I would like to say that we don't have an acting attorney, so Ms. Spalding has been acting, approving, or Mr. Rush.
Did she volunteer, or because the board didn't, did not approve that?
Madam President?
The chair recognizes Mr. Scarfo.
If I can jump in. You, as president, are allowed to have, bring counsel, as I had with Ms. Spalding and her firm. So I don't think there's any issue with that, and the fact that you asked for review of the agenda, I think makes perfect sense. And I think the fact of, I didn't know this because I wasn't part of it, but what I'm hearing now is what Walsh Gallegos, I imagine, were involved in were the specific agenda items. And you tell me-
That is correct.
-that I would guess that would be it, because I know I had to have many phone calls with them in the past, even though I wasn't a liaison anymore, because we had to get agenda items straight. So if I show up on the billing for that period of time, that's the reason. Okay? Tired of all the innuendo, but there you go. That's, that's what I would think, and you tell me if that's correct.
That is correct, Mr. Scarfo.
Well, Madam President, thank you for the clarification on your agenda. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Moving on to our next agenda item, action items from closed session, item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion. Motion to approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 6-1. Our next item is item 4B, consider and take possible action regarding investigation and decision-making regarding Title IX complaints filed by Assistant Athletic Director. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I do not have a motion on that. Okay. Do you have it?
I have it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Holmes?
Sure. Consider and take possible action regarding investigation and decision-making regarding Title IX complaints filed by Assistant Athletic Director.
Do you have the motion?
I move to approve the board's response regarding the investigation report of the complaint against the board filed by the Assistant Athletic Director, to designate and authorize Mr. Grabowski to work with Walsh Gallegos to finalize the board responses discussed in closed meeting, and to authorize legal counsel to provide it to the independent Title IX decision-maker on our behalf.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Item passes 6-1. Item 4C, consider and take possible action regarding the Title IX reports and findings related to complaint filed by a former athletic director of UIL Athletics-Fine Arts against a former board president. Mr. Grabowski, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to direct legal counsel to provide the independent decision-maker report and witness statements and investigative notes, to the extent permitted by law, related to the complaint filed by former executive director of UIL Athletics and Fine Arts against a former board president to any requesters who may request this documentation with the names redacted as discussed in closed meeting.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's second? Yeah, who's second?
Yeah, it's my second.
Your second?
I did, I did second.
We need a second.
Second.
Mr. Kirchhafer? All right. If you don't mind, I'll go first, if that's okay.
I would like to share some information about the Title IX investigations. I believe that everyone agrees, due process is important. Personal biases can affect the outcomes of investigations. Applying a process consistently to all parties is most fair. Regarding the Title IX investigations, on May 4th, 2023, the district received a Title IX complaint involving an employee who was personally close to the superintendent. Everyone is entitled to due process, and all complaints are investigated. Therefore, on May 15th, 2023, the school board voted to appoint the law firm of Walsh Gallegos as additional legal counsel. We took this action because we felt it was important that the investigation be conducted by a neutral third party. The person best suited to this approach, to approach the situation with an unbiased viewpoint would be somebody who never met the people involved, socially or professionally. This person would have an open mind and listen to all parties. Once appointed as additional legal counsel, Walsh Gallegos hired an independent Title IX coordinator and independent Title IX investigator who actually conducted the investigation. The investigator wrote a report. The report went to an independent third-party decision-maker who had never met any of the parties involved. One party involved in the report appealed the recommendation of the decision-maker. The appeal was heard by yet another independent Title IX decision-maker. On April 9th, 2024, the school board voted to release the report to the public. The same process was used in a complaint that was filed against the former board president. It is important to know that the board was not involved in conducting any investigation. Throughout the process, the board's role was to receive, read, and act on reports. In the past 14 months, two, a couple people filed 10 or more complaints. We were required to ensure all were investigated. The same process was used for all of the complaints. While not all of the Title Nines are complete at this point, many are. Thus far, the independent decision-maker and appellate decision-maker found only the original complaint to be sustained. As I stated, it is important, it is important that personal biases, it is important that due process is used. Personal biases can affect the outcome of investigations. Applying a process consistently to all parties is most fair. The school board was placed in a tough situation, and our goal was to move forward consistently without any personal bias. Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Sitten?
Matter of clarification, though, both, both parties did file an appeal, not just one. Okay, so that appeal decision was also not part of the original packet of documents that were released, and I've asked for that to be released as well, because you're not getting the entire picture as far as what was actually found and what was actually not substantiated, et cetera, et cetera. And then, as far as the emotion that's on the table, I have no problem releasing it. We've already released one. I have no problem releasing this one, but we just got the finding, and we know that it is eligible for an appeal, so you can't release these documents until the process is completely finished. And at this point, it may or may not be appealed. We don't know. Have no idea. And so you've got to wait for that to happen, and then release it all at one time, including the appeal findings, which we didn't release last time.
Thank you, Mr. Sitten. Anybody over here? Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Yes. Last time, I, when we were talking about releasing documents, I just wanted to clarify, I voted to not release the documents, simply because that wasn't our norm. Typically, what we do is we release the documents to the AG, and then when they come back, then we would release them. But since we have broken away from norm, then, you know, going forward, I mean, I guess this is our new standard. So I'm, I guess, if we're voting to release documents, I'll be forward if that's what the community wants. But really, you know, going back, I feel like we should always go to the AG first. But, I mean, I think we've changed course here, so just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon. Mr. Holmes?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah, I'm still a freshman up here. Thirteen months, it's been a very interesting run. I want to start by thanking my board members. We've been through a lot up here, and we volunteer a lot of our time, but I will say this about all seven of us, I can't speak for the board, but what I witness, we all work very hard up here to get it right. We work very hard on your behalf, because we work for you. That is not lost on us. And Dr. Brown, thank you for stepping up in the leadership role. Very appreciative. And to your administration, thank you very much for picking up. And to all the principals and on the campus and admin staff, and the 3,300 teachers that put up with this year too, because all they, all I really wanted to do is take care of those 3,300 teachers and all their kids, you know? My wife's a teacher, as most of you know, and I, month after month, I come home and say, eventually, baby, I'm gonna be able to take you, care of you and your kids, but not yet, but hopefully soon. But in the report, we've got to, we've got to read the report. This was about bad adult behavior, and you're gonna get to read about it soon. If it gets appealed, the deadline is Thursday, then they have a certain period of time of five days for that appeal process to play out. And I agree, the appeal comments should be released too. It should be in its entirety, if it wasn't last, since it wasn't last time. But when we vote on this item, there have been nine law firms that have done outstanding work, in my opinion. You've heard other trustees have a different opinion on them. I think you all have been amazing, sitting in the front row and towards the back of the room, and others that are not here that are maybe watching online, or will see it archived. Thank you all very much. About 20 attorneys, greater than 140 hours, I mean, 140 years of law school experience have gone into these decisions. They come from places like McKinney, Texas, San Antonio, nearby Spring, and nearby downtown Houston, all not related to each other, and they unanimously, independently came up with the same decision, that this should be released. Just again, thank you all for your guidance. It's been one heck of a year, and the end of the line is getting close to being in sight, and we have had outstanding legal representation, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Kirchhafer, do you have anything? Mr. Scarfo?
No, no real comment. I, I think it all should be released, absolutely. Every last word of it. I hope it is.
All right.
Ms. Parker?
I'm sorry?
Just a matter, another matter of clarification, when we voted on releasing the first set of documents, it was against legal advice. So they were not unanimously saying, we need to do this-
Mr. Sitten, I beg your pardon, but that was attorney-client privileged from closed session? And probably, we can go, we can go-
No, no, no.
We can go into closed and ask the legal?
I'm repeating what was said in open session-
I understand.
-by Paige Kyle, so that was not attorney-client privilege. She said it right there in open session.
No, sir. But-
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries- Okay, the motion carries, was it five yays, one nay, Mr. Sitton, and one abstention, Mr. Holmes? All right. Item 5D, consider and take possible action regarding employment of a superintendent, including proposed termination. Mr. Grabowski, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to propose the mid-contract termination of the term contract of Superintendent Elizabeth Fagan for good cause and to authorize the acting superintendent, board designee, or Walsh Gallegos to deliver written notice to Dr. Fagan of this board action as required by law. I further move that the board designate and authorize Trustee Ken Kertschoffer to work with Walsh Gallegos as discussed in closed meeting regarding the handling of the proposed termination of Dr. Fagan.
Do I have a second?
A second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sitton?
As a, just clarification, that was basically two decisions made into one motion. Do those need to be split? Or can they be made concurrently in one motion? I'm, no, I'm asking you. You're, you're the, who's advising us at this point? I'm confused.
That motion can be made as written. It does not need to be split. Of course, the board can amend the motion if they have the choice, but the motion is legally appropriate.
Because even though we're asking for two.
Is your mic on? I can't.
My mic's not on. Would you like me to repeat what I said?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Sitton, your question was, was the motion legally appropriate or did it need to be split into two?
Right, because we're actually voting on two separate things.
The motion is legally appropriate. You can vote on two separate things in the motion. Of course, the board can amend the motion to vote on each one individually, if that is, if that is the choice of the board. But there is nothing legally inappropriate with the motion.
Well, and, but we couldn't split it and vote it on two separate motions because it's only one agenda item. So I'm just, I just want to make sure I know what we're doing.
The agenda item can be made into two motions as long as they relate to the agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
Ms. Balding? On that motion, I mean, I feel like the public has a right to know why we would be terminating the superintendent. Can you state the reason why we are, that we have a motion to terminate the superintendent?
So first, it's not my motion. Second, I'm not going to give legal advice in here. I will give legal advice to the board in closed session and I think Mr. Wood was attempting to give some legal advice in closed session earlier when that closed session ended. If the board would like additional legal advice, my recommendation would be to go into closed session to get that advice. Board members can discuss reasons that they are going to vote one way or another way. But if you're asking for lawyers to talk about legal advice, I believe that needs to be done in closed session.
So can I say why the motion is being made? The cause, the quote-unquote "cause" for the motion?
Can you say why you believe there is cause? Is that your question?
Can I say why I believe that the motion is being stated? The basis for this motion?
I understand your question. You may discuss the motion on the table and anything related to it.
So I can say, in open session, the cause that was stated to us about why we are terminating or wanting to terminate or have a motion on the floor to terminate the superintendent?
Whether this board decides to terminate the superintendent is not because the lawyers have told you to or not told you to.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not implying that. I'm not implying that. I'm saying the specific reason that the board is making the motion.
Are you asking whether you can reveal attorney-client privileged information in an open session? Or are you asking? I don't think I understand your question. If there's an opinion about cause that a board member has, that board member can say it.
I would suggest that we go into closed and allow Ms. Lamond Dixon to ask whatever questions she wishes.
Thank you. I would appreciate that, Madam Chair.
Let's take a short break and we will go back into closed. The time is now 8:05 PM.
Going into closed session under 551071, consultation with board attorney regarding all matters as authorized by law.
The time is now 8:09 and we're back from our short break. Does anybody have any discussion? Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Thank you very much for that, Madam Chair. I really do appreciate it. I just, the reason I had to ask this question, and so I didn't want to break any laws or rules here, but I felt like the cause should have been in the motion. But just to clarify, I did step out of closed session early because I do not want to, I want, the comments that I want to make to be made in public. So, so there may have been some discussion, but I wanted to make sure that we could, we could discuss the cause. And so the motion did not share the reason behind why there is a motion for termination. And that reason, in my opinion, is not cause for termination. And the reason is failure to maintain a relationship with the board. Now, I have two issues with that. One, I don't believe we have cause to do that. I don't believe it's in her contract. But the other thing is, that is not why we put Dr. Fagan on leave in the first place. And the reason that we put her on leave in the first place, after that meeting, that evening, it was debunked that it wasn't true. So in my opinion, after that meeting, since we found out that night that the reason we put her on leave was not true, then we should have had a special meeting and reinstated her, in my opinion. We did not do that. But today, we are now saying there is a motion on the floor to put our super, to potentially terminate our superintendent for failure to maintain a relationship with the board. So I just have a couple of points and questions. One, I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Parker that we should not have personal bias. Number two, I believe that people have the right to have due process. And in my opinion, we have not given Dr. Fagan due process. So I have two questions for our board president. One, have we given her an improvement plan?
We have not.
Have we given her anything in writing?
Ms. Balding, can we go back into closed session? And I just want to make sure I'm not saying anything out of turn. Is that okay?
That's right. I would recommend we go into closed session under 551071, consultation with board attorney, and 551074, deliberation regarding personnel, including the superintendent.
No, it's okay. You don't have to answer. I will answer. We have not. Okay. So, and then the other side of this. We have a board, well, we had a board and superintendent evaluation committee. Has that committee met in a year? Has anything been called? No. Mr. Scarfo was president a whole school year and we never had a meeting for the board and superintendent evaluation committee. Do we add any issues to her goals? To say, "We want you to improve this, this, or this"? No, because we never had a meeting with the board and superintendent evaluation committee for an entire year. Matter of fact, Mr. Richard Stoices has come here many times to speak about test scores. We easily could have had a meeting and added that to the superintendent's goals. But we did not have a meeting for a full year to discuss anything regarding the superintendent. Matter of fact, that committee was dissolved on a four-three vote so that we wouldn't even have the committee because we wanted the full board to be a part of a non-committee. And then we never had a meeting about it. Not one meeting in an entire school year regarding anything that the superintendent has done wrong. We could have met easily. We could have added things like test scores to her goals, whatever concerns you have about failure to maintain a relationship. We could have written out an improvement plan. We've done none of that. So I guess one of the questions I have is, where is the documentation? Since I've been on the board, she's had a perfect evaluation. What happened for all of you here to lose faith in her? She has excellent ratings from every person on this board, except Mr. Grabowski, because he wasn't on the board. Not only that, people can come here and speak about Mr. Kite, Dr. Fagan, what have you, I understand. But we allowed them to date. They did tell us, not you, Mr. Grabowski, that everybody else here, everybody else here, she told us. When we've asked questions in the past, we have been ignored. I know Mr. Sitton asks questions all the time. He's ignored. When I ask questions, ignored. I'm just trying to lay out the facts because ultimately, ultimately, if you don't like Dr. Fagan, that's fine. That's fine. But we have not gone through a process, a real process for an employee to say, "Oh, well, failure to maintain relationship with the board." I mean, I just think that's a very weak argument for terminating someone who has a perfect evaluation. And then, not only that, she technically has a contract for four more years on it. So let me just say this. We've spent about $1.8 million on attorneys so far. You're gonna, we're gonna end up paying her like $1.5 million or more. So we need to really think about the fact that we are about to make almost, if you look at other things too that could come from this, we're about to make almost a $5 million decision today out of taxpayer money because you don't like Dr. Fagan somehow, or whatever it is. Or you feel like she didn't tell you something here and changed her mind. But there is nothing in writing. There is no documentation. And you have a right to not like a person. But to me, if you're going to stand here and we're going to be honorable about this situation, I think it's very important for us to say, "What did we do?" Okay, as a board? I don't think it's fair for anyone. We all work in different industries. If you have an employee, would you just, you don't give them a chance? You don't give them an improvement plan? I'm just saying, that's what the board does. Y'all serve on other boards? That's what you do as a board. If you have a problem with the one employee that you have, you tell them and you make changes and you hold a board and superintendent evaluation committee meeting to make those changes. We don't sit here and just be upset about something and say, "Okay, well, we're just going to let that person go." And if I were our top employees, which we have lost a lot, by the way, y'all need to definitely read our recommend, our resignation list. It's like, if you don't fall in line, then you're like let go or pushed or pressured. Why are we doing that? We have never been this way. You know, we're being investigated right now by TEA. And honestly, I welcome the intervention because I do not think that this is the way we should handle business. And when they call me, I intend to fully cooperate because I think what we are doing is wrong. And in my opinion, I know we have lots of attorneys and I understand that. And I think all of our attorneys know me well enough to know that I am not here to disparage you. But I do not think what we're doing is the right thing. It's just not. So I hope all of us up here would just pretend for like the next 10 minutes that we're all in the honors class and we really think about the way due process really works and we do not vote to terminate our superintendent.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Ms. Lamond Dixon.
May I just caution the board and remind the board that the superintendent evaluation is confidential? And so as you are stating opinions tonight, if you choose to state your opinion, just remember that unless and until she chooses to release that information to keep her evaluative information confidential at this time.
Mr. Sitton?
Okay, I'm looking at Dr. Fagan's contract. So I'm not going to state opinions. I'm going to read it. Item 4.1, Development of Goals. Superintendent shall submit to the board a preliminary list of goals for the district each year for the board's consideration and adoption. She did that. The superintendent and the board shall then meet and the board shall approve or revise the list of goals. We did that. Superintendent shall submit to the board for its approval, plan to implement these goals. She did that. Superintendent, the board shall meet no less than annually to assess the goals and may adjust or revise the goals either by action of the board or upon recommendation of the superintendent and approval of the board. As Ms. Lamond Dixon talked about, that never happened. The goals approved by the board shall at all times be reduced to writing and shall be among the criteria on which the superintendent's performance is reviewed and evaluated. The board agrees to work with and support the superintendent in achieving these district goals. That really hasn't happened either. So then we go to item 7.3, Dismissal for Good Cause. The term "good cause" is defined and there's items A through Q. I'll pick out a couple. I'll pick out just one. Because I think this really goes to what Ms. Lamond Dixon was actually talking about as well. So item 7.3, number B. Incompetence or inefficiency in the performance of required or assigned duties as documented by evaluations, supplemental memoranda, or other written communication from the board, provided, however, the terms and conditions of this paragraph shall not justify good cause unless the board has provided the superintendent a reasonable opportunity to remediate any incompetency or inefficiency. We have done none of that. We haven't even discussed it. We haven't discussed, as a board, not listening to attorney's opinions, but as a board, as a team of seven, as a team of eight when she was here and not on leave, we never discussed her job performance or her future job prospects of staying in unbalancing. None of that's ever been discussed. Nothing's been put in writing. Nothing has been talked to her about. I just, I mean, it's right here. There's, there's only one other thing, the last item Q, and this is the catch-all, any other reason constituting good cause under Texas law. So you've got a catch-all phrase there and that's what we're going to hold our hat on. I'm sorry, I, there's just no possible way that in good conscience you could do this without ever having a conversation with the individual and putting anything in writing as a board. Now, I'm not talking about attorney opinions or whatever. I'm talking about as a board, doing our due diligence and doing our job. We've done none of that.
Mr. Grabowski?
I'll come right out and say it. I'm going to vote.
I'm gonna vote to propose termination. Now I'm gonna tell you how I get there. I started thinking to myself all week when I, or the last few days when I saw this on the agenda. When was the last time Mike Grabowski was asked to make such a major decision about employment in someone's life? It brought me back to my own professional life and my graduate, I'm a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy. Went on to fly fighters, trainers in the Air Force, and I've had a magical commercial pilot run. When I was 21 years old, three months to go in our senior year, I was commissioned to be part of an honor board at the Air Force Academy, Naval Academy, all military academies. You live under an honor code. We will not lie, steal, or cheat, nor tolerate among us anyone who does. There was a female cadet who was in our little cadet sundry store that we would get little knickknacks, snacks, school supplies. She had put on, she went past the counter where she tried on some makeup, looking in the mirror. She took the makeup and put it in her pocket. She went and got some more sundries, filled up her basket, paid her bill, and walked out the door without paying for the lipstick that was in her pocket. She is three months from graduation. And we were asked to figure out that she's tried to steal that lipstick. We had three females on the panel of seven, or four females on the panel of seven of which I was on. And they explained that in a certain uniform, because we're dictated what we wear in the military, it's not our choice often, that is where females stored their lipstick. She'd been a cadet for three years and eight months. How many times did she put lipstick in that pocket? Is what I kept asking myself. She walked out of that store, in Mike Grabowski's opinion, unknowing that that lipstick was in that pocket unpurchased. That's the intent. She did not have intent to shoplift. She simply took something off premise without paying for it. And we unanimously found her seven, nothing, innocent. But that's just a step of the process like where we are tonight. If we had found her guilty, then it goes to the commandant. If the commandant of the academy or one store general finds her guilty, he cannot remove her. It must go to the Secretary of the Air Force. I'm telling you all that because we're in a process too. Because I have seen some of the overwhelming evidence against Dr. Fagan. A lot of it, some of it was just presented the last 15 minutes of closed session of what some people walked out, but I saw. And I independently agree with the nine law firms, the nearly 20 attorneys, and the 140 years of experience, that Dr. Fagan's intent was very different than that cadet. Numerous purposeful actions were done to damage this district. I'm gonna repeat that. Numerous purposeful actions were done to damage this district. How this vote won't be 7-0 is mind-boggling to me. But some of us walked out in hearing some of the evidence. Is the man with the camera still there? Are you with the chronicle? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I just want you to make sure you get this part straight, that this is a step in the process. If we vote today and it's four to three or greater to remove Dr. Fagan, Dr. Fagan is our superintendent. She can appeal. It will then go to the T E A. A hearing officer will hear the story. He or she will, has between 60 and 120 days to come up with a decision. I know, Mrs. Allen, you want the answers as to the whys, but we can't give them to you right now. This is an ongoing process. And it's not complete tonight. This is just one step. And I promise this to you. I'm a big advocate for trustees to be able to put what we want on these electronic boards. You know that. I showed it with the STAR data and the drastic decline that we've had. When this is all said and done, I will work with the attorneys. I will create slides and I will show you all the evidence if given permission to put it up on those slides. I know you all want to know. I know you do. This is just not the right time, yet it is an ongoing process. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Mr. Holmes, did you have something?
Yeah, so I know it's not the why, and I'm gonna continue to say this. I'm not debating the why. I'm debating, debating again how we're doing this. How is it that I'm an equal parts trustee board member and there are certain people on this board that have access to information that I don't? And you're able to make decisions about somebody's employment and I don't have that same access to information? Our legal attorneys from both houses that are here tonight have heard me say this over and over and over again to the point of frustration. I'm not debating the merits of why each of you individuals are choosing to make your decision. What I'm basing it is on the basic tenets of why. How is it that you have access to information, certain board members, and I don't? So I'm gonna ask the community. How would you feel, and you've heard multiple people, I think Mr. Grabowski was the last one to say it, you want me to determine the fate of our superintendent based on 15 minutes? Would you be okay if your boss walked into your office one day and said that in a matter of 15 minutes, they fired you? Is that fair? See, because from what I, from what I, let's see, due process. Definition of due process is, and it's short definition, is a legal requirement that legal matters be handled fairly, fairly, fair, meaning 50/50 even, and in accordance with established rules and principles. So I was told, and I actually, I understand what our legal counsel shared, that certain things can't be shared as to the why. So you, again, want me to make a decision, but you can't tell me everything because of quote-unquote leaks? How tight, how tight of a line am I walking by stating that I was told I can't have access to certain information that I need to make a decision because there are leaks, quote-unquote, on the board? Not established leaks, but quote-unquote leaks? So please, counsel, help me out. What can I do? I know it's about a vote and I think, you know, I'm gonna vote no on this. My point in the matter, and it's happened with Thomas Newman, not basing the merits of the why, it's the how. No performance improvement plan, no written documentation. So again, it seems like, again, I'm being asked to make decisions with limited information. This seems like kindergarten where, you know, your parents, when you're five years old and you're told what to do and how to do it. But this time, fast forward about 49 years now, right? And I'm being asked to make decisions and just being told, make it based off limited information that some trustee board members have, and I'm supposed to be okay with it and I'm not. And I'm absolutely sick of it. There can be special meetings brought together. Yes, I am so tired of special meetings. But I will tell you what, we've had quite a few over the last year. I've had to move, travel. I was supposed to be in DC today. I'm leaving out first thing tomorrow morning because I wanted to be here. So my point is, I don't care about how many special meetings we need to have. I need the information in order to make an accurate decision on somebody's employment. And if we don't, if we take that in the body of 15 minutes, it happened when we made the decision last time to put her on leave, no facts, and I'm only here on one side. And then it seemed like it was refuted as Mrs. Lamont Dixon shared in subsequent emails by the superintendent, but I've heard nothing beyond that. So again, I'm not arguing why. I'm arguing how we're doing this. And I'm asking the community, do you, would you agree? Would you want somebody making a decision on your employment based on limited information? And within, sometimes I think when we decided to put her on leave, I think it was five minutes I was given to deliberate. That's why I abstained. You're not gonna get an abstention this time. You're gonna get an absolute no. I'm not in favor of making these types of decisions with limited information. And I'm gonna ask for further discussion on why I, as a board member, continue to have to make decisions with limited information when I'm an equal voting member. That's the problem I have.
Mr. Holmes, would you care to go back into closed session and discuss it further?
Absolutely. Can I, yes, may I respond, Madam President?
You're recognized.
Thank you. It's 8:34. Unless I'm presented with where it says in the employment contract that Dr. Fagan has went against what is in that contract, unless I'm given more than five minutes to assess the information presented as to why we're considering even the point of wanting to terminate her. And yes, I know that she can, I know, I get all that. She can, she can, you know, file against that. I get that. But my suggestion is, Madam President, that we table this? Because again, I'm being asked again with Thomas, with Thomas Newman, with putting Dr. Fagan on leave, and now for termination. And again, it just seems like, again, community, I'm just letting you know, I don't have enough information to make a really good judgment on your behalf. And I was hired to represent you. I was, I was voted in to represent you. And I don't feel that I can accurately do that.
Would you care to go back into closed session?
Sure.
All right.
Excuse me.
The chair recognizes Mr. Scarfo.
Well, thank you. I think you'll let us speak first before we go and do that.
But as a matter of point of order, you asked Mr. Holmes if he wanted to go into closed. He said yes, you agreed. So any other discussion can happen after we come back out.
That's appropriate.
All right, let's go into closed.
Under 551071, consultation with board attorney and 551074, deliberation regarding personnel, including superintendent. The time is 8:36.
9:21, we are back from our short break, long break. And I want to apologize to everybody here for keeping you later than what you need. But this is just such an important decision. I just felt like we needed to get more facts and we had quite the lively talk. Okay, Mr. Scarfo?
It's getting late. Look, I just wanna say, like, some of the comments that were made, Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, but the leave of absence reason was not debunked. As a matter of fact, it was verified in terms of what happened. And, you know, the picture you're painting, it, to me, is just fantasy as well as some other comments that were made. And you know what? We've had information for months and months and months. And that information was provided by counsel in detail as to why we're at the point we are now. I've heard all of it for quite a long time. And I'm at the point now where, okay, I get it. I got the information I need to make an informed decision. And that's what I'm ready to do. And, you know, this whole thing about, well, I don't wanna get into that, but like I said, it's, we've had the information for months. It's not, and I don't understand the comment, Mr. Holmes, that some people had information you did not have? I'd like to know what that is because I didn't have any information that anybody else had. You even got my Title IX report. You got to see it as a board member, as I did. You got to see it pretty much the next day than when I did or the other party did. And that's just one piece of a lot of puzzle pieces. So I'm really at a loss. And I just don't like when people just say stuff and it's, becomes innuendo. It becomes not really a fact, but people may think that it's true. And then you have people who go off on tangents based on things like that. And I've seen, seen comments made here, social media, other places, newspaper. Anyway, the information has been quite extensive. The reasoning, I believe, has been quite exhaustive and very diligent. And I can't come to any other conclusion. So I'm comfortable now, after all these many, many months, to be able to, to make a decision. Thank you.
Mr. Karchoff?
Am I last to go?
No. I hope.
Yeah. I'm not gonna take you through all three years I've been sitting here, but I will take you quickly through the last 14 months. The seven of us on the board 14, 15 months ago, when Mike came on and Robert Scarfo was reelected, I'd say we were, there was a pretty good relationship. Martina and I had a good relationship. Robert Sitton and I. Marcus, of course. Scarfo, not so much, a little bit. He's, you know, Chris. But Dr. Fagan, Dr. Fagan and I, very close relationship. And I understand from a trustee standpoint that our job's to govern her. That's it. Not anybody sitting in front of me. I sure wish we talked about teachers all the time and the kids and about hiring the best teachers. I think we've got the best teachers in the state, if not the country. We continue to do that. Pay them more money, bring them here, make it irresistible. And then you go through this last 14 months. We can sit here, we can finger-point at each other, we can blame the process. All seven of us up here, we all do different things in life. But I know all seven of us up here have gotten in trouble for doing something in life that we wish we didn't do. We wish we got one back. For me, probably 100 things. You know? Dr. Fagan and I had a great relationship up to about two months ago. And, you know, I wish we weren't here. I wish this decision wasn't brought here. I always said transparency, accountability, and our CEO of our company, that's who she is. We have to, that leader has to have impeccable behavior. And if she knows, and if she knows, and you already have one Title IX information, you're getting another one back tonight about Robert Scarfo, and you can cry and say, well, the investigation's crooked and, you know, Walsh, Agos, and all the bills. Well, okay, you're entitled to your opinion. We work for the taxpayers. Our job is to govern one person. And that one person just needed to make a decision when she was aware of behavior that was going on. Just make a decision. Send a message to the rest of the district. I'm not gonna tolerate it, no matter who it is. No matter who it is. And I'm not gonna walk you through the 14 months. Yeah, I was the liaison. Okay, everybody up here, Marcus Holmes has the same information that I do. Everybody up here has the same information I do. This, you know, I wish I wasn't here. But you know what? There's been times in life when each one of us made a mistake and we had to be held accountable for it. It's unfair to the people watching, sitting here, the teachers, the administration. It's unfair to all of you. If you wanna be mad, be mad at the trustees, be mad at me, fine. It's unfortunate that we're here and we shouldn't have been here. I just wanna say again, I just want to say again, I trusted Dr. Fagan to do the right thing. And when it came down to it, her and I always had a conversation. She said, Ken, will you let me know when it's time to go? Will you let me know? That came two months ago. And her and I, we talked weekly, we talked hours, all the time. A great relationship. And it's not easy. And I really wanted to tell everybody that two months ago, when I talked to her, I asked her at that time, she said, you tell me. I said, now's the time to go. We had many conversations. When she was applied for the Reno job on a Sunday, hours on the phone with her, she said, if I don't get the Reno job, I'll hand you my resignation. I said, great. I'll let the rest of the board know. Everyone had the information that's sitting up here two months ago. That never came. So my trust, when you lied to me, the trust broke, 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 broke. That's where I am, sitting here. Our leader of this district has to be above board without reproach, I mean, has to be the, there is no indecision. If it's wrong, it's wrong. I always say we call balls and strikes. If it's wrong, it's wrong. How does it, how do the administration up here, and how do the teachers feel, and all the people that work in this district, when you allow someone to do what was done, and you don't do anything about it, now you want to blame us for this process taking so long? But they're allowed due process. They're allowed it. And no matter what we do tonight, they're allowed due process, as they should. And everybody has the same information we do. Every one of us up here. And we'll make the decision tonight and see what happens, and we'll move forward. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry to the taxpayers. Could we have done a better job? Of course we could have. We tried. We tried. You got seven of us here slugging it out in the back. And, you know, the leaks, where'd all the leaks come? How'd my emails get out? How are leaks going to me that Walsh Gallegos doesn't have? How did they get out? How? Right? Going to blame Walsh Gallegos? Walsh Gallegos didn't have my, those emails that were leaked did not have them. So did somebody up here leak them, or somebody in the administration leak them, or somebody in the legal department leak them? Why was there such suppression? Why was, I mean, why the fight the whole time? The fight for 14 months? All we had to do was have one person step up and say, enough, we're not doing this anymore, it's over with. So I'm sorry. It's a tough decision, and that's it.
Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and then one comment. First question I have, Mr. Grabowski, tonight, we're talking about failure to maintain a relationship with the board. I just wanted to ask, have you ever tried to establish a relationship with Dr. Fagan? Like, have you ever asked to have a meeting with her?
I come from the military, where I believed in a military rank of command, and I see her as my employee, and it's not my responsibility, nor part of my job function, I don't believe, to have a personal relationship with her. I have a very professional relationship, and that's what I judge myself on.
So have you ever had a one-on-one professional meeting with Dr. Fagan?
Yes, I had the initial training for two days.
The initial orientation that we all have to go through by law?
Okay, then it was by law, but the answer is yes.
Okay. And then, Mr. Scarfo, I think we're just going to have to disagree. And I don't know on the email that we received, debunking, in my opinion. But I'm sure if anybody wants to do a public information request on the emails that Dr. Fagan sent, that's probably possible. So we can't say that?
Is that attorney client privileged?
That was closed session discussion, all of it.
I would say...
Can I?
With the email, I believe you're talking about?
That was after the school board meeting had closed.
Correct. So we had the discussion in closed session about, I believe we're talking about when she was placed on leave, that situation.
Right, but that email came after the board meeting, and we were told we could even talk to her directly.
Correct. So she emailed that night and the next day about what we discussed in closed session, correct?
About the leave, yes.
So that was based on legal advice in closed session, when we talked about the email. And then she, she was not in closed session at that time, correct?
Correct.
I'm not talking about the one you're talking about. I'm talking about, I don't want to go back to closed session.
Yeah, so that's why I was trying to, trying to...
But I don't think we're talking about the same email.
Assuming you're not, anybody can do a Public Information Act request for anything they want. Whether it is disclosed depends on the exceptions in the Texas Public Information Act.
Okay, I was just saying, we have a difference of opinion. So I just was trying to address that. Okay, last thing, or, I'm sorry, one more comment, and then I will ask Ms. Spalding a final question. You know, I feel like a lot of the things that we are going through really began, Mr. Scarfo, I believe, this is my opinion, we will not agree, I believe it was retribution because you were not voted in as president initially. Because that's when this district really, truly became in disarray. Yeah, Mr. Kirchhoff came to me that April.
Madam President, point of order.
State your point.
The point of order, trustees talking out of school. If they're not given the floor by you, they need to be quiet.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, Mr. Kirchhoff came to me that April, the end of my term, first year as board president, and said that he was not going to vote for you as president. This had nothing to do with anyone else on this board. And what did I do? I talked him off the fence. I said, he should vote for you to be president. But then, through your own actions, other things took place. And he came back to me in June, before the June board meeting, to say, I, I respect you, Martina, I respect that you tried to talk me off the fence, but I am not going to vote for him for president. This is how we, we got to where, like, all of these things that transpired with a district in disarray started in that moment. And then, then you go out into the community, essentially, people call me all the time, yeah, Mr. Scarfo sent someone here to speak, to say that you had a backdoor deal, and da-da-da-da-da. None of that's true. None of it's true, because that's where it started. But I sat here quiet and allowed you to speak every board meeting for a whole year and disparage me and tear me down, when I wasn't against you at all. But here, well, you know, but that's where we are. That's all I have to say on that. But I do have a question, Ms. Spalding.
I hope I do better than the last one.
Would you please share what happens if this vote passes tonight? What the process looks like? What the risks could potentially be for the district? What all of that looks like? Because we could potentially be putting ourselves in a world of trouble. I know some people don't see it that way, but I, I do. But, but would you please explain the process, depending, if we were to vote tonight to terminate our superintendent, what does that look like going forward?
Yes, I understand your question.
And is your mic on?
It is.
Oh, I can't hear you, okay.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. If you vote to propose termination tonight, with the motion language as it is, one of the designated parties will provide notice to the superintendent of the board's vote to propose termination of her employment. The superintendent will receive that in writing, and then the superintendent has 15 days by which to make an appeal to the Texas Education Agency. If the superintendent does not make an appeal, the agenda, the action comes back to the board to make a final decision on the termination of the superintendent's employment. If the superintendent makes an appeal to the Texas Education Agency, the Texas Education Agency appoints an independent hearing examiner from the Texas Education Agency, individuals certified through the Texas Education Agency. That individual then calls a hearing that is like a mini trial. That hearing takes place within 60 to 105 days of when the hearing examiner, when the superintendent requests the hearing. And that trial allows the superintendent, due process, to make her appeal. She can be represented by counsel. The district can be represented by counsel. The evidence is presented very much like a trial in a courtroom with similar, some similar, some dissimilar rules, but rules that are clear through the Texas Education Code and its supporting regulations. And then the hearing examiner makes a written recommendation of proposed findings of fact, conclusions of law, and can choose to make a recommendation. After that time, the hearing examiner's written proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law come to the board, and the board must vote and make a decision on the hearing examiner's proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law within the rules of Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. That vote can be to terminate or not to terminate, or to modify the hearing examiner's findings of fact or conclusions of law. Is that what you're looking for?
That is exactly what I'm looking for. And last point on that, if we are all, we're under investigation, the district, by TEA. So if they were to send in a monitor or conservator, what does that look like? Does that stop the process? Is it posit? Like, what happens?
Unclear.
Unclear.
Unclear. I have seen, you know, monitors come in on very specific issues, like you have an issue in the X department, and then matters related to that department may be controlled by the monitor or semi-controlled. I've seen monitors come in for a full board, and that might change it. So it would just depend on what, if the TEA appointed a monitor, if the TEA appointed a conservator, and for what? Hard to speculate. There's too many possible options.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you so much. I really do appreciate your answer.
Anybody else? Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, I do, because I'm sorry, but now, this claiming I disparaged you, go back and watch the meetings. I didn't disparage you. The only thing I pushed on was that I said you needed to step down because we were violating our policy and procedures. That's not disparaging you. And to say, oh, people were telling you all this stuff, well, that's hearsay. But I will tell you this, when you were out campaigning for city council, you made a comment in front of Mr. Flickinger to a potential voter. He didn't know, you didn't know. And when he mentioned to them that the board president was supporting him in his campaign, you said to that person, oh, you mean the one who's charged with sexual harassment? Okay, I think that's a bit of a disparagement, because at that point, you know, those were allegations not yet decided upon. So, you know, you want to paint yourself, do whatever you want, that's fine, but don't try to make this about me saying this is retribution going back. And besides, I do have, and I'm going to ask the board to waive privilege, to release those emails that clearly show conspiracy, at least let the public decide whether it's a conspiracy or not, what three board members did about that whole rotation process, and let them decide. Because I'm going to ask, and hopefully the board will waive privilege on those emails, because the attorney at the time was involved. So, you know, to say this, oh, it started, and this was retribution for, what? If I supported Dr. Fagan, especially through the pandemic, through my time as president, I did not act any way unprofessionally towards her, even once the other thing was hammered on me, but I still didn't change how I acted. So to try to somehow bring this back to me is just lunacy. I'm sorry, there's no other word for it. And I find it very insulting that you would do that, because it's not anywhere near to be true in this, in this universe. So I'll stop, because I, but I just, I just can't let that sit, that you would come back and try that her bad actions were somehow my fault. And that going back to June of 2023, when that first report came back and witness statements corroborated the complaints, she could have taken action, and some of your other board members could have counseled her to take action. She did not do that. It was just double down, double down, double down, and here's where we are today. So I really take great umbrage in you even intimating in any way that this is somehow my fault, that I caused all this to happen. That's absolute nonsense. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Kirchhoff?
Thanks, Madam President. The emails you're talking about, Mr. Scarfo, the three trustees on those emails, am I one of those people on those, on those emails?
Which emails are?
The three that you're talking about.
Was I just said about getting...
About the rotation?
No, you, no, you were not.
So I'm not one person on that, on that email?
No, you're not.
The other trustees, two that are up here?
Yes, they are, and one's no longer here.
Yeah. And I want to just point a reference for everybody watching that's sitting here. All seven of us have read Robert Scarfo's sexual harassment, 147 pages. How anybody can sit up here and disparage you at this point, I don't understand, Martina. I don't understand it. After reading what we all read, I, you know, I don't.
Mrs. Lamont Dixon, and then I would appreciate if one of my friends called the vote.
Well, first of all, Mr. Scarfo, I am, I'm not here saying that anyone's actions are due to your actions. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying the district has looked very different since that moment. And Ms. Parker, I'll call the question.
I need a second to call the question. Mrs. Lamont Dixon called the question, and I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Sitten, seconds, all in favor of voting on this? To call the question. Ready, ready to vote? Call the question. Discussion to be ended, and we're going to vote on the original motion. Okay, unanimous, thank goodness. All right. All those in favor?
Please reread the motion.
Please reread the motion.
Okay, since this motion was first read by me quite a while ago, Madam President, I move to propose the mid-contract termination of the term contract of Superintendent Elizabeth Fagan for good cause, and to authorize the acting superintendent, board designee, or Walsh Gallegos to deliver written notice to Dr. Fagan of this board action as required by law. I further move that the board designate and authorize trustee Ken Kirchhoff to work with Walsh Gallegos as discussed in closed meeting regarding the handling of the proposed termination of Dr. Fagan.
And Karen, that was already seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes for three. Moving on to item five on our consent agenda. Item five A, approval of the meeting minutes for the June 11th, 2024 board meeting. Consent, approval of the, item five B, approval of the minutes for the June 21st, 2024 special board meeting.
Pull.
Okay, pull. Item five C, bond fund transfers and amendments, consent. Item five D, budgetary transfers and amendments, consent. Item five E, approval of goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding 50,000 in aggregate, or 25,000 individually?
Pull.
Item five F, 2024 construction and construction-related purchases. Item five G, tax refunds. Item five H, board authorization of inter-local agreements, consent. Item five I... Item five I, approval of RFP 2021-00-005-14, general merchandise, consent. Item five J of RFP 2022-101, miscellaneous instructional materials, consent. Item five K, approval of RFP 2023-102, services, repairs, maintenance, installation, district-wide, consent. Item five L, approval of RFP 2024-104-52, books and publications, consent. Item five M, deductive change order, consent. Item five N, change order, multipurpose rooms, group three, consent. Item five O, 2024, 2025, optional flexible day program, OFSDP, consent. Item five P, resolution regarding wages and staff contract days off for district closure, consent. Item five Q, committee appointments?
Pull.
Pull. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve consent agenda items six A through six Q exclusive of five A, five E, and five Q.
In my notes, I had a five B. Is it five A or five B that was pulled?
It's five B. Five B.
So can you reread your motion?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I move to approve consent agenda items six A through six Q exclusive of five B, five E, and five Q.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Scarfo, seconds? Do we want to?
Let's correct that.
Let's correct that.
No, that's fine. No problem. I move to approve consent agenda items five A through five Q exclusive of five B, five E, and five Q.
And Mr. Scarfo, do you still second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, set moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I guess it's consent, so no. All those in favor? Opposed? In favor? Seven oh. Motion passes seven oh. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion for item five B?
New system. Hold on, guys.
And they're correct. We switched from Board Docs to a different diligent technology, and so we're having a learning day here, technology-wise.
Motion to approve the minutes for the June 21, 2024 special board meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, I pulled that because I was not here, so I need to vote no. Or I need to abstain.
Thank you kindly. Can I please get a motion for item five E?
Vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All those in favor? Opposed? One abstention. All right, can I get a motion for item five E?
Five E, motion to approve the CH listing of vendors and estimated annual costs for contract awards and renewals for the purchases of goods, professional services, and/or non-construction services that are estimated to exceed $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are you the one that pulled it?
I think we both said pull at the same time. I don't mind going first, unless you want to go first.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
Thank you, Madam President. My question is really about Hoosier and Clark for accounting audit services for the $40,000. I'm just curious on why that's listed here. And before we answer, I guess the question I have, Mr. Beatty, is how much have we already paid Hoosier and Clark to do, like, outside auditing? Because I feel like we've paid them quite a bit, so then I'm wondering why they're listed here as an annual cost of $40,000.
The, I would have to look at the exact amount we pulled or that we paid in the last fiscal year. This is the recommendation for the new year. So I don't know off the top of my head how much we paid in the prior fiscal year, but this would be for the fiscal year just started on 7/1.
Okay, so is this type of line, and I'm sorry for not asking in advance of the meeting, but is this line item as a vendor, is that typical? Or is it something that's new as a line item? I just don't remember seeing them until they actually did an audit for us recently.
Let me jump in here, Mr. Beatty. So it was requested that we have an item on here for this firm in case the audit committee chooses to do anything further. Not that they will, but should they. And they wanted to use them, so we had an amount in there for this firm if we chose to use them.
Mr. Kirch, are you done?
Well, so we're talking about the new audit committee or the old audit committee? Because technically, I'm on the audit committee, but I did not know about the $40,000. And the new audit committee wouldn't know that they're on the audit committee, I don't think at this point. Maybe Mr. Scarfo would, but no one else. So I'm just curious on how. Because you're part of the committee decision-making team. We're on the committee together. So you would know. But I'm just saying the other members wouldn't know that they're even on the audit committee.
Right.
Because it's announced today. So I'm just asking.
This gives even the new audit committee the flexibility, should they choose to do more work with this audit firm, they can. They don't have to, but it's there if they choose to.
Okay, so you brought it, Dr. Brown, to be, you brought it to the agenda? I'm just trying to understand where it came from.
I was asked to bring it to the agenda.
By a board member?
Correct.
So was it asked to be put on the agenda by the old committee board members? Because I'm on the committee. I'm asking, because we've never discussed this.
Can I recognize the person who might know? Mr. Kirchhoff, I think you're the current chair.
Thank you for the question. That is a fair question. And let me try to answer completely without interfering with any investigative work. You have appointed me the chair of the audit committee. That's a big job, and I take it very seriously. I see my role as the first gatekeeper for this elected board of trustees to ensure that our tax dollars, community, your tax dollars, are used 100% properly all of the time. If allegations are brought to me, or really any of us, it is not my job to investigate them one way or the other. It is my job to ensure that the full and complete information is reviewed and investigated so that we, as board of trustees, can ensure again that the taxpayers' money is under 100% appropriately all of the time. We have a new internal auditor coming in. That internal auditor needs a fully clean slate. It is our job to set that individual up to do his or her job with all of the information and tools that he or she needs and to put them in a position to know everything. So I cannot publicly share any specific allegation. I can share that I will always fight to have any allegation of any mishandling or misappropriation fully investigated. That's what I did when we originally hired the external forensic reviewer on separate allegations. And it is what I will always do as the chair of this board's audit committee. I know each of you would do the same in the interest of our community. It is my intent that full information be brought forward to this entire board and the community as any investigation now or in the future and the district funds is completed. Thank you.
Mr. Sitten hasn't spoken yet.
Just, I don't remember. That's why I'm going to ask the question. Did we approve, and however you pronounce the name, did we approve them with a public vote to do the forensic audit? Because I can remember us talking, I'm going to be careful because I don't want to break Open Meetings Act. We talked about a different firm to do the forensic audit, and then this firm showed up. And I don't, I just don't remember if we actually voted to approve this firm to do the forensic audit. That's my question.
Mr. Kirchhoff?
We spoke and closed, and y'all put me in charge, and I'm the audit chair committee, right? Committee chair. And I talked to counsel, and we wanted to use somebody outside of the district that had no ties. So it's clean, as we've seen, what we need here, and that nobody had any prior relationships with anybody in this district. And that's what we did. And I worked with Billy and his team and with the audit committee that Martina was part of, and who else? Mike Grabowski, and that's who we used. So we didn't insert, we didn't jump, we didn't do anything. Just because you made a recommendation, you might, somebody made, that's not who we used. We used somebody that had no relationship with the district. So that's what we did.
Mr. Sitten?
My question was, did we formally vote in public to hire this firm to do that audit? That's my question.
No. Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, we did, and we approved the amount of money, and we did a second, there was a second motion when we increased the amount, the up-to amount to pay them. I can't remember the month off the top of my head. We can go back and look at minutes from those various months, but I know that was there.
That was my recollection as well, but we were happy to go back and pull the minutes.
Yeah, because I would like to, I'd like to know that, because there seems to be some discrepancy in what people are remembering and not. And then also, because my question is, is this, is this $40,000 for work that's already been performed? Or is it for future work that we put ourselves into now that our internal auditor after 19 years has resigned to take another position at a neighboring firm, I mean, neighboring school district? So I'm just, I want to know if we've approved them in the past. Did we, or is this money for work they've already done? Or is this for anticipated work in the future? So that's what I, that's what I'd like to hear.
Yeah, not work done, anticipated, but the information we brought to the audit committee and then brought back to the full board, and you may vote then. Do we continue? Do we do it once you have the information? I don't even have all the information. That's why we're doing this. We have allegations that need to be looked into.
I think Mrs. Lamond Dixon had her hand up first.
There's so many different avenues now. Let's see. Well, I wanted to say, okay. The first statement that you made, Mr. Kirchhoff, I agree wholeheartedly. I want things to be thorough, transparent, clear. I agree wholeheartedly. But the way our board is structured when we work in committee, just because a person is the chair does not mean they technically can make a decision without the rest of the committee. So Mr. Grabowski and I are on that committee, and we never talked about this. So for the chair to just call the interim superintendent to say to put this on an agenda, in my opinion, is not the way we do business. I mean, we typically, there's a lot of people on the committee, and I just says three. So typically, that committee would have had this conversation, and then it would be put on the agenda by you calling. Not for us to be surprised here today when we're on the committee.
Well, what I would say is you have the opportunity to vote on it right now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's not how we do business around here, but I guess it's the new way.
Mr. Sitten?
And, well, and kind of going along with conversations that happened before one of the multiple recesses about information. I know we can't talk about it right now in public, but you've mentioned several allegations that need to be looked at. I have no clue what you're talking about.
I have no clue what he's talking about either.
That's what I'm saying. So, I mean, but we're putting it out there to the public. There's allegations that need to be investigated, and we're voting on someone to potentially do that, and we don't even know what the allegations are. We haven't discussed any of it. We don't. And so now we're going to vote for someone to potentially investigate something that no one knows anything about, except apparently you.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
And I just want to state that as a committee member, I don't know anything about it either.
I brought it to counsel.
Mr. Kirchhoff, sorry. You are recognized.
I brought it to counsel, talked to counsel about it, and talked to Dr. Brown, and here it is. So, I mean, I'm not smart enough to be an attorney. I brought it to them.
That's accurate. Mr. Kirchhoff contacted me and informed me that allegations had come to his attention. I don't really know what they are either, but they involve finances and that he wanted them investigated. He believed all the board members would want any allegation investigated. I heard you say that this evening, and so he asked if an agenda item is appropriate to have a firm investigate allegations. And I told him that it was, and it got on the agenda.
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
So, correct me if I'm wrong then. So a board member, I can call you and say, I have an issue with X, and ask you if I can put it on the agenda. I can bypass the president and the rest of the board, and I can call Dr. Brown after we talk and put something on the agenda.
I don't know if he bypassed the president. I know that he called me and asked me about the legal appropriateness of it. I know that he told me he was going to inform the superintendent, acting superintendent, of his intention, and I assume that he went through the process that board members go through. I don't know what your specific process is to get something on the agenda.
And I did. I talked to President Parker.
You're recognized, Mr. Kirchhoff.
I talked to you, talked to President Parker, and I talked to Dr. Brown, and I went through all the proper protocol. And I'll leave it at that. I mean, that's, I'm the committee chair of the audit, I mean, I'm the audit chair.
All right.
Just a matter of clar, I'm sorry, a matter of clarification, though. If I want to put something on the agenda, I go to you.
If you have not spoken to two other people about it and are breaking the Open Meetings Act, right?
No, I'm going to you to say I'd like to put this on an agenda.
Fair.
Okay. I don't go to Dr. Brown and tell him to put it on the agenda. I don't even talk to Dr. Brown about it. I talk to you, and you talk to Dr. Brown about it.
I did. I talked to Dr. Brown.
No, that's why I'm just clarifying protocol.
But I did refer Dr. Brown back to Ken because I didn't know what the allegations. I still don't know what it is, so.
Wow, wow. So we've got something on the agenda to investigate allegations that only one person knows about?
It's just money that might be used, maybe, by the committee. It's the opportunity to use funds if needed. And if the committee determines it's not needed, then we don't do it. All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four, three. Mr. Holmes, can I get a motion? Mr. Holmes, can I get a motion? On item five Q.
Motion to approve the following committees and assignments for the 2024-2025 school year.
Can I get a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. I will speak first. The past few school years, the school board has had five committees, Audit, Advocacy, Building and Planning, Finance, and Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee. The board committees vary through the years based on the district's current needs. We are making a few updates to the new school year. For the 2024-2025 school year, all seven trustees will serve on the Superintendent Evaluation Committee. In another update, we are adding two committees, Safety, which is of the utmost importance to all of us here in Uble ISD, and Technology. Safety is the district's number one priority. Having a safety committee will allow the school board to remain updated on all initiatives. Technology, and especially AI, are changing the world. We want a technology committee to support cybersecurity and other proactive measures. We've had a technology committee in the past. Some trustees will be serving on committees that they have not served on before. Almost all committees will have a new chair in the new school year. This is to promote succession planning and to ensure that trustees gain experience throughout their term serving on the various committees. Mr. Sutton.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And not that I don't think that safety and technology are important, I think they are. But board policy says, the board may establish standing committees annually after the election of officers. Not one person, not a committee of three, but, so I don't remember the board talking about adding additional committees.
We are right now.
It's, it's already adjusted on the floor?
Yes.
So, we, we're talking about it now, but y'all, you've already added them and added committee members to it. So, we're not doing what policy says. And so, after the committees are established, then you're, the committee of three get together and, and decide as a committee of three who goes to what. So I'm not sure if y'all actually sat down together and talked about things like that, because you mentioned succession planning. You know, historically, number one, again, as I mentioned, we didn't follow protocol by adding more committees, but that's okay. The number two, I find it odd that if you're talking about succession planning, Marcus Holmes has served on Building and Planning for several years, and the succession planning would make sense having him chair instead of someone that's just been on the committee one year. So I don't understand that part of it. Historically, we've also tried to make sure every board member chairs at least one committee. I don't think that's happened, unless they're a liaison position like with the Education Foundation or some other community organization. So personally, I've got 10 months left. I knew I was going to be removed from all this stuff. I knew it. So I, I'm not blindsided by it. I've served on the board for 13 and a half years. I have a degree in finance. I've served in multiple capacities in Building and Planning. Really brought Marcus on knowing I was not going to run for reelection three years ago. And it would make sense having him step in because of his knowledge and history that we've gone through. So I really view the committee assignments as a total slap in my face and a total retaliation by a couple of my colleagues. But again, I'm a big boy, I'm on my way out, that's fine.
Mr. Scarfo.
Mrs. Parker, I believe the board operating procedures allows the board president to not only create standing committees but ad hoc committees as they feel is necessary. So I, I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that's what they allow.
Mr. Rush or Ms. Balding? Can you please clarify?
Going to put it between us and see how it goes. So, Mr. Sutton is reading the board policy correctly, that is BDB local for internal committees. Your board operating procedures do say that the committee assignments and committees themselves are at the discretion of the board president, which is why they are slated the way they are on the agenda to approve committees, that is, the board approving the committees and the committee assignments at the discretion of the board president. It's just on one slate as a board agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Mr. Sutton.
So once again, Uble ISD Board of Trustees' operating procedures does not match up with board policy, because operating procedures say the board establishes them, not the board president.
The policy supersedes.
I understand that, so let's not cherry pick what we're going to fix and what we're going to clean up. Let's make sure all of our operating procedures and policies match.
Mr. Scarfo.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon had her hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Mrs. Lamond Dixon.
So, Mr. Rush or Ms. Balding, so to clarify, do we need a motion to put the committees in place and then a separate motion?
No, I don't think so. And I did, I had to do a little bit of digging through your board agendas to figure out historically how this worked, and I actually modeled this when I recommended the agenda language. I've modeled it after previous years where it was done this way. Here are the, that's what it said on the agenda at least. It was, here are the titles, here are the people, it was one slate motion.
No, I, I agree with that, but I'm talking about the new committees.
I, I think it's the same.
The same?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just clarifying.
I think.
I had to add a committee to HCAD, and we had to actually have an action item to vote for the committee and then approve that before I could appoint people to the committee, so I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I don't think there's a legal distinction there. It's, one motion can handle both, or you could separate them out, but ultimately, it's the same thing. It's just about, is the public aware of what is being voted on is the important thing.
Thank you.
Yes.
And all these questions were asked prior to this moment, and interestingly, Karen found that sometimes they were in the consent agenda, sometimes this item was in consent, sometimes it was in action, sometimes it was in action from, from closed session. So it was just interesting. But I think we're, does anybody have any further discussion? Mr. Holmes?
No. Mr. Scarfo. Yeah, I just got to say, to the cherry picking comment, I tried on more than one occasion, while I chaired the board last year, to get resolution to a couple of these things, and I kept getting shouted down. So, you know, you get what you want, you know? So anyway, it's something that needs to be corrected, but like I said, the operating procedures do allow the president to do, to create committees, ad hoc or standing, and if we need to fix that with the policy, then we need to do that, just like we do on those other ones that are still hanging out there. They're like the old hanging chads. So we need to get it corrected. And like I said, I tried on more than one occasion last year, so, thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, one, want to say honored to serve on any committee, right? I'm here at the pleasure of the community. But I, I was wondering, in terms of what Mr. Scarfo had mentioned, right? I've been on Building and Planning since my inception on being on the board, which is now going on three years, and from what I've gathered in just talking in terms of the history of how it works, I was just wondering as well. And again, I'm not picking up my marbles and going to take them home just because I'm not, I'm here again to serve, but I was just wondering if I could get clarification on that decision and the logic behind it.
Well, the decision was made, and, and a lot, I, you know, when I've had my committee assignments, it's, there's, it's sometimes you get what you want, sometimes you don't. Does anybody have anything further?
I mean, I was saying. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Holmes, I, I did stand up for that. I felt that you have deserved the right, after your tenure on Building and Planning, to be the chair of that committee. But it takes three people to make the decisions, so we, we did work back and forth on a lot of different areas. I'm not saying it wasn't workable, but that was one of the, the sources of contention for me personally, but, you know, essentially, I was outvoted, so.
And I was relatively neutral on that, on that one, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes five, two.
I'm sorry, you said five, two, can I see the votes again?
Oh, see again?
Yeah, she wants to see the voting.
So four?
No, yes.
Opposed.
Opposed, who's opposed? It's a certain, Mrs. Lamond, this one. Sorry, thank you.
Moving on to item six A, ratification of approval of the consent agenda, oh, just kidding. Item six B, policy revisions, TASB update 123 and administrative recommendations, final action. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt and approve the board policy revisions as listed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Scarfo.
Just really quick, I, we don't have to belabor it here, but I've, I've went through all these policies, and I believe, and I'm going to share it with you, that you can share with the board, my comments, because I think some of these policies, even the student handbook code of conduct, I think some of these things need to go to either Technology Committee, to Safety Committee, because I think they need, we need to do a little bit deeper dive on some of them. It's fine for now, but I just have some concerns of what we're not doing, and I'd like to present those to you, and then you could pass them on to the board. And I really would like to see that those new committees that, founded committee too, on the, you know, with safety and technology, that they look a little deeper and decide, because I think there's some, some conflicts, there's some things where they're not going far enough on local policy, and that's all I wanted to just bring to your attention. You asked me to do it, I did.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Item passes seven O. Item six C, 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. Motion to approve the 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sutton, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven O.
Madam President, can I ask a question on, there is an item six A, ratification of approval of consent agenda items five A and five B from the June 21st board meeting.
Oh, we, yes. Okay, so item six A, ratification of approval of the consent agenda items five A and five B from the June 21st, 2024 board meeting. Do I have a motion, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, motion to ratify the intended approval of consent agenda items five A and five B from the June 21st, 2024 board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Scarfo, seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, since I wasn't there, what, what were these two items? There's no, there's no information.
It would be on the, on the minutes from the June 21st, which are attached to this agenda?
Okay, so, no, since we're, it's open for discussion, no one can just give me the Cliff Notes of it real quick?
Dr. Brown? Ms. Martin?
I want to make sure I look at the thing right. The consent agenda from. Again, the consent agenda items were A, budgetary transfers and amendments, motion to approve the listing of budgetary transfers, including an increase in the budget for legal fees and functional category transfers for year and needs. And the second item was. Oh, there it is. Goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Motion to approve the CH listing of vendors and estimated annual costs for contract awards and renewals for the purchase of goods, professional services, and/or non-construction services that are estimated to exceed $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually.
Were these items tabled, or?
They were, they were, they were passed, but there was not a second ever given.
There was a motion and a vote.
Okay, that's what I read. So I did, okay, I read that, I think Marcus, Mr. Holmes made a motion, and then it died.
Correct.
Okay, so I, so that's what I read, okay. I just didn't know.
And then Marcus caught that later, and when she's putting the minutes together, like, who did the second? Well, we couldn't find that, so it was all discussed and passed, but we just didn't have a second, so we need to clean that up.
Okay, and so five A, though, was increasing our, our legal fees budget?
Five A was budgetary transfers and amendments, and it was a motion to approve the listing of budgetary transfers, including an increase in the budget for legal fees and.
Okay, that.
Functional category transfers, so I don't think it was the only one.
Mrs. Lamond Dixon.
So, they shouldn't be separate, like, I just feel like.
They weren't separate on the consent agenda in June.
I thought it was A and B, separate, two separate items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yes, that's right. You guys separate them out, you get consent for each one. There just wasn't a second. So you can take them together or you can take them separately.
You can have two motions on this one agenda if you want it that way.
Okay, I mean, because one I would vote for and one I would not, so that's why I'm asking.
You can amend the motion.
Yeah, amend the motion.
You can split the motion.
Yes. So I move that we ratify the approval of consent agenda item five A from the June 21st, 2024 board meeting.
Do I have a second?
That's your amendment.
I'm amending, yes.
Okay.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, back to the original motion, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, I appreciate it very much. Our next item is item seven A, Portrait of a Graduate, Survey Results. Any questions from the board regarding this item? Anyone? Item seven B, Intruder Detection Audit Report, Mr. Perkins?
We have no report tonight.
Thank you, okay. Item seven C, Updates From Our Board Associations and Committees. Would anybody like to present a report? Oh, Mrs. Lamond Dixon.
I don't have a report, but I have a question for the Building and Planning Committee. I don't have a report, but I have a question for the building and planning committee. Is that appropriate to ask a question? Okay.
Well-
A question to the committee?
I think this is just updates from the committee. I don't think this is questions for the committee.
Not deliberate. I just wanted to ask the status of a project. We can't-
I don't think that's appropriate at this time. I think that the most appropriate status would go to the superintendent and ask him, acting superintendent.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Item seven D, Financial Services Report. Any questions from the board regarding this item? Item seven E, 2024-2025 Parent-Student Handbook. Any questions from the board regarding this item? Every, are there any, moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to put on the very next agenda, if we could, a discussion, an action item, that the agenda be posted one week or seven days prior to the meeting. Give us more time to do our due diligence.
Posted publicly or to the board?
Posted. Posted to the community as well.
Posted to the community as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any interest in this item? Okay, Mrs. Lamont Dixon?
At the last board meeting for new board business, I requested a board update in closed session about the issues that Mr. Ford has brought to us, and it did go through with consensus. I just wanted to remind-
Yes.
Madam President, that I would like to do that. I mean, I know we have a technology committee, but specifically, an update on schoology and-
Yes, and the only reason that didn't happen was because the, everybody was busy bringing everything back up online from Burrell, and so we definitely will have that report.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sitton?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I've sent numerous emails requesting a full accounting of our legal expenses, specifically since May 20, May of 2023, who was paid, how they were paid, and what case they were assigned to. This should also include payment found under Legals budget, not just the board's budget, since we no longer have legal counsel, and we've been using outside counsel for our board meetings since, I believe, October. So, I think that every member of the board would want to know how much money we've actually spent, where it's gone, and to what complaint or case it went to. And, and I mean, I don't, I think, I don't think that can be made public initially because of all the conflicts and all that stuff with the AG and all that stuff. But I think that each of the board members should have a full accounting of where the taxpayer money has gone. And I have requested this multiple times from board colleagues, from attorneys, and I have gotten zero response from anybody, zero. And as one of seven that's responsible for this, I would think someone would just say, "Mr. Sitton, shut up. We're not going to tell you." Or they would, "Give me the information." So, I want this on the next board agenda, if we have to do it in closed session or whatever. But I want an accounting of all the money we've spent on legal and for what complaint, what case it went towards, and who got paid, how they got paid.
Pull the board on that? I'm fine with it.
Me too.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Okay, we'll get it on there. Anybody else? No. All right. With that, the time is now 10:33 PM. This meeting is adjourned.